Twenty twenty four, uh we call the meeting of the R M L D Board of Commissioners uh to order. And I'll read our code of conduct. Do you want to call the order?
Okay, yeah, I call the cab meeting.
Yeah, okay. Uh the meetings being audio recorded, held remotely on Zoom and live stream on R T R C T V. Uh R M L D Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the agenda. Once recognized, all persons addressing the board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It's the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment and discussion. Is are anybody participating remotely is was Bob on or not?
Bob is not, yes.
Okay. Uh do we have any members of the public here? Okay. So. Should we get on the agenda? Do you want to? I think it's a it's now has you.
Yes.
Have we called our meeting order yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh. I guess everyone's read the minutes.
Then you know. No comments. I can read the motion if there's no comments.
Good.
So move that the R M L D Citizens Advisory Board approved the March twenty first, twenty twenty four open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board Secretary.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Alan.
Hi.
Hi.
Um now do we have a? We don't have minutes to approve, right?
Nope.
No, okay, then uh we have finance update next. Is that Ben?
Yes, it is.
So, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Uh once again, my name is Ben Lumenbaum, the Director of Finance here at the R M L D. And I'm here to uh provide you with a quarterly finance update. Um currently, we are um in preparation of the calendar year twenty twenty five budget. I'm working with staff to assemble the both the operating and the capital budgets moving forward. We have selected, as you recalled, um as you recall, a few months back, uh we were talking about implementing an A P software uh package within our our group. We have selected some software, which I'll talk about uh shortly thereafter. Also, a few other highlights, both the above the line payments and below the line payments have to. All four corresponding towns and below the line payment in the town of Reading. And I'm pleased to report that we have been awarded our first grant, which I'll talk about momentarily. Moving on. This is our current cash balances as of six thirty twenty twenty four. Please note that this is a preliminary cash balance as we continue to do our reconciliations for for the ends of the month. Just wanted to note that our cash balances continue to grow. Um it was pointed out earlier that this cash balance is ahead of where we were at the beginning of the year or the end of last year. Around fifty nine million dollars starting in January. And now we are up to approximately sixty two million dollars as of June thirtieth. Moving on to the next slide, uh here is our preliminary budget, or I should say, operating budget totals versus our actuals. Our May financials have been provided to the board, and you'll find that at the end of your packet trending continues as projected with our operating budget basically being at eight million dollars a month. If we project out to the end of the year, you'll find that we come to um. Well, under the budget of uh one hundred and seven million dollars, and we should be somewhere around ninety five million dollars when all is said and done for the year end. Unless there are some, you know, extraordinary expenses during the course of the next six months, I don't see, you know, that changing. Moving on to the capital budget. You'll find that we have uh spent approximately six point five or six point six million dollars as the month of May. It should be noted that we had a significant milestone payment as part of our preliminary investigative charges or our construction work in progress. Charges. For presentation purposes, I'm putting that all together as capital uh expenditures, because once um in in particular, this milestone payment. For the Wilmington substation, once it comes online, uh this will be considered a a capital charge. If we uh projected our spending out to be approximately one point six million dollars a month, give or take. Uh that will target put us in the target spend range of seventeen point eight million dollars. But again, each and every month, we will go back and review and adjust our projections based off of our uh cash flows. Moving on, if there are any questions?
Well, the differential between the um this spend and the budget, that's pretty substantial. What what does that?
In terms of the differential between the spend and the budgeted amounts, so when we program out the capital program, program out the entire project. I'm basing the spend off of. What we've spent the last uh several months in averaging it out. I want to make sure that I'm conservative in my projections than trying to say that we're going to spend more than we really are.
So it gets carried over till the project is finished?
Okay.
And 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 there's been a tradition in the.
And part of the reason for the tradition is that in order for us to do any bids, which of these larger projects have, we have to have the money in the budget for it, so.
Yeah.
And and they typically go over several years, so. But there's, it'll be rare that we ever hit them. Correct.
So the budget spent is not so broken down by month so much, or or you carry. Full project costs. Early.
It would be. Yeah, yes, guys. So we have to have the full, it the full budget project cost will wish better across a couple of years. But we won't always like. Well, we might have something budgeted in twenty twenty four in order to send the bid out. We have to have it in the budget. But we wouldn't award it, I wouldn't spend it until potentially twenty twenty five, or in some cases, the second part of it twenty twenty six. So there's always going to be that lag, particularly given the longer term deliveries. Follow? Yeah, good.
You know, a hundred and a hundred and forty million at that time, and there's a.
That was over.
Yeah.
Five years, yeah. Well, there is not, yeah. Six, yeah.
Moving on, um I'm going to highlight some uh outside services. First, we're going to be looking at legal services. Should be noted that um through June thirtieth, we have spent approximately a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars in legal services. Compared to last year, we're actually uh spending less. Last year, we were at two hundred sixty one thousand dollars. Or difference of ninety nine thousand dollars in terms of legal costs. And as you can see up on the board there, here are the breakdown, here is the breakdown of those particular legal costs. Any questions? I will move on.
Got a question on that. Um I assume that the substation or uh in- incurs its own set of.
Yes, so when we go back a slide and I mentioned the uh preliminary investigative charges for the construction work in progress charges. Those are held separately from what's identified there, because it's eventually going to be um expensed as a capital budget item. As opposed to an operating budget item, but until the provisioning of that station goes online, it kind of sits in that kind of. Uh, you know, holding spot.
Just just a quick follow up is I in in past years, I've asked kind of generally, you know, how can we keep legal expenses down and? I I it's, I know this is a six month snapshot. Is there a way to look at if we have year over year and including our in-house plus? Outside of all all buckets, how it looks on a year over year? Is it possible to do that? And not now, but you know, maybe at the next meeting.
I can certainly prepare a document identifying our legal costs, both tied to construction work in progress. What hits our professional services uh bucket, which this is. And then uh the third part, you mentioned the in-house.
Well, oh, because we didn't always have an in-house counsel.
Okay.
So just I'm curious what the, when you add it all of it up and how how has it changed over the years, because.
Yeah.
She's one of the, I know there's always a lot of legal expenses that we need to incur, but just. Looking at it year over year over a longer period of time would be nice. If it's hard to do. We'll give you this kind of split up too, because one of the major variables is material management. We use a lot of it for procurement. Last year was a particularly um. There was a lot of materials that we did last year. I know, and you can't say that, and that confounds the analysis a little bit. Yeah, but we give you this, we give you the split, it will help, yeah, yeah.
So how does the um year-to-date compare to the budget?
So the budget uh legal costs are spread out for throughout the different areas, so we have approximately. From area fifty all the way down to area eighty within our uh budgeting software. Within each area, there is kind of uh a catch basin for budgeted legal expenses. I don't have that number off the top of my head. But I can provide you what's been budgeted for legal expenses this year and what we've spent against it. Both with construction work in progress included.
Yeah, it might be helpful to always, because I'm just looking at the prior slides or person's budget. We just either always do person's budget or always do versus last year, or maybe always both.
Oh. Well, it's gonna be helpful, because, yeah, depending upon what the category is.
Perfect. Moving on, um outside services, again, these are professional services that we contract. Um, looking at some of the breakdown here, you'll notice that there's forty one thousand dollars in the outside accounting services, for example. That's per our annual audit that we do each and every year um. In order to ensure that, you know, we meet our fiduciary responsibility of reporting out the health and well-being of our financials. Um, other costs include our like P L P L M for engineering, culture fit for H R, and then M I S. Um, the renewal of our contract with Canon, Beacon Telecom, Visix, and so on.
Comparison will be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's totally, totally reasonable.
Next slide is an interesting slide. Um in the past, I know that this body here has asked. Uh what are we spending our money on in terms of the Board of Commissioners and also the cab? So I've gone ahead and prepared a slide showing what the budget is for both the B O C and the C A B. What we've expended through this uh through June in the balance moving forward. One of the things that I did want to bring to attention and highlight is the brand new iPads that you have in front of you this evening. Uh, that. That is a five thousand dollar approximate investment within this board here. So as we move forward in looking at our costs incurred, you'll also notice that we had also spent, or or you folks have also spent. Approximately eighteen hundred dollars in travel reimbursements. So I know in the past, um Phil, you've asked. What are we spending this money on? And I wanted to come back and present to you in detail what those expenses are.
Yeah, because I always had an issue with the fact we have budgeted fifteen thousand. We're not spending fifteen thousand. That's always been my issue.
It, we we come out looking great. We're underspending.
In the meantime, that goes into the rates and we're charging the customers for that.
Well, it rolls over every year, so hopefully, but yeah. It's like ten grand.
But includes. I mean, were we not doing N I P A meetings? That's just June, right? So that.
So this is your, so um every year, um a portion of the Board of Commissioners along with the cab traveled for the N I P A meetings. This year, I'm pleased to say that I believe each and every single member of Board of Commissioners is attending the N I P A meeting this year. Along with two members of the cab. So those costs that are incurred for that travel would hit these two buckets here.
And this is not just for June, this is through June.
This is through June.
Yeah. Here.
There are no further questions. To the next slide. So this particular slide I'm extremely excited about. When I was last here presenting in front of you folks, we were talking about ways that we can create more efficiencies within uh the accounting department. Pleased to report that since we've met, that we have selected a vendor by the name of Papersave, which will be providing us a product called Parasoft. Parasoft is a A P system for automation and. Essentially, as I mentioned earlier, the process that we have in place is an eight-step process where there's a lot of manual. Back and forth between the person who does A P to the people who review and sign off on the documents. There is. You know, a higher preponderance of errors, human errors that can take place in a manual process. Um, beginning next month, um at the beginning of August, we are now starting to implement this new A P systems, kicking off with. Working with our I T department to ensure that everything is properly um aligned. The goal is to have the system up and running, you know, sometime in the middle of the fall. So that means all sorts of documentation. Which can be both. Digital or paper will actually be saved on a cloud server and at accessible at any time without having to worry about losing documentation during the course of uh, you know, the process. So I'm very excited about seeing this um new software and this new procedure in place, which will then free up resources and provide us. Valuable information like dashboard support and seeing, you know, which vendors I know at the point I was asked, you know, who are our top vendors that we pay out? What's our accounts payable period? You know, which vendors do we struggle with in terms of making sure that? Uh our bills are going out in that thirty or that forty five based off the terms of the contract. So this was a uh a huge success. This will be a huge success. I'm very pleased to say that we're beginning that implementation process.
Ben, for the um implementation, that's what kind of uh implementations for besides just installing the software, but like. Process mapping, change management, training.
So.
Support once you.
So there is support that will be provided by um Papersoft, um Papers saved, excuse me. Um, that they will be going through and providing a a a very robust training program to ensure that everybody is up to speed on it. And there will be documentation and manuals in terms of that change process, showing what the original uh procedure was and how it's been streamlined.
Are are you familiar with this product?
So we actually went out to bid essentially, and we solicited um uh input from, I want to say, five different vendors. Based off the presentation of those vendors and reaching out to other municipalities that have used software. We found this one best fits our needs within uh within R M L D.
Is your purchasing integrated with this, or?
So there will be integration eventually with purchasing. Right now, purchasing is done. Um our requisitions are through a different system. The goal is that that should be able to integrate smoothly with this one, and the two should be able to talk together. Right now, our system is is literally um scanning things in in P D F. And manually entering in documentation into spreadsheets. This will now uh essentially create an enterprise resource system, if you want to call it that, for A P, which will then be able to more efficiently track our our spending.
Will the folks who have to approve A P have any change in process? Like, will we need to log into a system to approve?
No, um you're, the the folks who approve the warrants, there should be no change in that. This is more for our own edification and provide us a more streamlined process on our end. Any further questions? Moving on, I am pleased to announce that we've been awarded through the Executive Office of Public Safety a thirty five thousand dollar grant for cybersecurity work. We have just signed the contract with the Commonwealth as of today, and that's gone back to um the folks over at um E O P P S. I'm also very pleased to report that the Federal Highway Administration has reported back favorably a five point one million dollar grant that we applied for for level two and level three chargers. I have reached out to our congressional delegation to further emphasize the support of of this program, which, as I said, will install level two and three. Uh fast or level two and D C fast chargers throughout our territory in terms of. Um, the ramp up towards electrification in the phasing out of internal combustion engines as per, you know, uh the legislature's guidance. It is my hope that we'll hear back soon in terms of what a final award will be from Federal Highway. This was a competitive grant, meaning that it is discretionary funds. And not only are we competing with other cities and towns here in Massachusetts, but we're competing against uh. All fifty states and territories out there. So this is a a a really great story, so. I hope the next time I come back and uh present in front of you folks, I can say that we have been awarded, you know, X amount of dollars from uh the Federal Highway Administration. Uh, the Department of Transportation.
When is the funds, that's pure, a pure grant?
It's a.
It's not a match, not matching fund.
Um, it it is matching funds. I believe it's an eighty twenty match, if I recall correctly. Um, most of the federal highway grants are, I should say, the Department of Transportation grants are eighty twenty.
And when would the award be announced?
I do not have a timeline on that. I literally just heard from um a liaison over from Senator Markey's office that. They have sent out another letter of support from the delegation, being Senator Warren Markey and Congressman Moulton. To uh Secretary Buttigieg's office to to say, hey, look, you know, we would like the the funding awarded to us, so. Once I hear back and once I know, I'll let you folks know.
Great.
Would, do we have a plan already for?
Yes.
Funds would be, we had to drive this detail of what we would.
So in order to apply for these grants, you have to have a scope, schedule, and budget. You have to show uh essentially where um the charging stations uh most likely will go. Um, it, there was a comprehensive grants uh application that was submitted as part of this uh.
The state was also doing something, right? The N E V I or something, it's called N E V I.
Yes, so.
That's separate.
This is separate, so the state had submitted a grant application for the section forty ten D program, I think it is forty ten or fifty ten, I can't remember off the top of my head. Which is for grid resiliency funds. They are applying to the Department of Energy, similar to how we applied to D O E for the GRIP program. Uh, in order to bring in money uh to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and then disperse that money out to, you know, various um. Municipalities and and municipal white departments. The Commonwealth was awarded, I want to say. Nine million dollars? I I don't quite recall the actual uh amount. I do have the slide deck in my emails. Uh that they sent out yesterday. And they have opened up um an R F P essentially for munis to apply for that funding. We have already identified a program within our capital uh maintenance program, our utility repl- utility pole replacement program. To which we will be applying funds for. The funding that is available right now, as I said, is for resiliency to address uh, you know, the impacts of. Uh, climate events and ensuring that we harden our system. Uh, as we get, you know, more of these super storms, and we will be submitting funding for that for our utility pole program.
That's not what I'm asking.
Oh.
I I was asking you about charging because the state has programs along ninety three and Route one twenty eight, right, which would be part of our territory.
And this funding, I believe, is the same funding that we applied for separately, so. When when we submitted the application for the U S D O T, which is, you know, not Mast dot, but. The Mast dot program that she's speaking of. It's for along the alternative fuels corridor, which is I ninety five and I ninety three or I ninety flat five slash Route one twenty eight. That funding there had specific requirements that charging stations had to be within a mile of the highway and everything else. So that's similar funding, but I don't think that we would be eligible for it if we're awarded this funding here, because it would be too duplicative. Um, in terms of the pots of funding that the the money comes from.
But you still can apply for both, right?
No, if if we're awarded this funding here from uh U S D O T. We have to make sure that there's not a duplication of effort in the work that we're doing and a duplication of the money being used. So I would need to check on that a little bit more clearly. I do know that Mast dot does have other funds available, but. Usually those are earmarked for cities and towns as part of highway projects. But I would need to do a little bit more digging on my end to see whether or not, number one, we're eligible, and number two. By having uh potentially awarded this grant, whether that disqualifies us from going in for funding like that.
Absolutely. The federal government has also noticed that we have the busiest interchange in state in our territories, which is the ninety five, ninety three.
Um, so that's, that's a mass highway issue. I I can speak from prior experience that I know that there is um. Oh, God, there's like a focus forty plan, um similar to an M B T A one where they they lay out um. The capital projects for the next twenty to thirty to forty years. I can do a little research if you're pretty curious about that, but I don't know if that meets uh the scope or the mandate of the work here. Any further questions?
We like grants. We're trying to produce as many as we can, so.
Great, thank you.
And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you still have one more, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just, just real sorry, quick highlights, yeah, quick highlights, sorry about that.
Don't get out of here that quick.
Key points, key takeaways.
Yeah. All right. One slide. Last month, I was in San Diego to attend the National Conference for A P P A. During the conference, uh I spent three days in several different seminars focused on finance, legislative updates, and advocacy. Throughout the public power universe. Some of the key points that came back, um the biggest key point that came back is that cash is king in an ever-changing landscape of public power. And as we saw on the previous slide, there are opportunities for federal funding through our federal partners. Some of the key takeaways that, you know, from this uh particular conference. Was I spent an entire day, the first of three days. Going over finances and and, you know, financial measures and and financial barometers. The biggest one that I saw was really quite a simple measure of how well we're doing as a utility. And it's called basically, how many days of cash do we have on hand? Based off of our current financials from our audited uh twenty twenty three uh financial report. We have approximately ninety days worth of cash on hand. Utility should have anywhere between ninety and a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty days to be considered healthy in terms of where we are. Going back several years, back to about twenty twenty, we've kind of hovered anywhere between as high as ninety five days, as low as seventy five, but we've continued to trend back up. Uh, to the ninety day threshold, which is good to see. So the work that we're doing and the 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 work that we continue to do here in ensuring and protecting the ratepayers' funds is is showing to be fruitful. Um, as I indicated earlier, there are plenty of federal opportunities out there uh for competitive grants. The thing that they stressed and emphasized was tell a winning story. Why is R M L D the perfect place? To to provide those grant dollars? Whether it's for charging programs, whether it's for uh key security programs. Us doing the right thing and being successful in administering grants, like our first grant that we just received. Will build upon that success, and it will. Usually what happens is when you get federal funding or when you get state funding, if you do a good enough job in managing over those funds. Being good stewards over those funds, additional funding opens up. Success begets success. So I'm hopeful that with the first, you know, tranche money that we've we've received. Once we expend that money, and we will do so very quickly, uh on multi-factor authentication and some training, that thirty five thousand dollars. That. The level two and D C fast chargers. You know, once we get a determination of how much an award will be, we'll be able to, you know, scale the program up or down based off of the award. And then move forward on the installation of those chargers in a reasonable amount of time. And then. And then, again, the focus elsewhere was on infrastructure reliability. Uh, the electrification of automobiles. I sat in on another seminar about how municipal light plants can partner with the automotive industry. In order to, to really get over that twenty percent adoption hump uh, for EVs. And I'm proud to say that my wife and I both own EVs. Yes.
Question, going back to the grant. You, you're talking about grants, five million dollars plus with an eighty-twenty match. How many chargers are we talking about?
How many charges is that equivalent to?
I mean, it, there's a plan, like you submit a plan for so many charges, right?
Correct.
And what is that number?
I don't have that number off. We, we had, we had laid out a schedule between now and twenty twenty-eight of roughly seventy-eight additional chargers in our area. So just under a hundred, seventy-eight was the number. Mixed between L twos and DC fast.
That, that, thank you.
Any further questions? And I will say that San Diego was not sunny in seventy. It was. Entire week I was out there. They call it the June, so.
When I was out.
Bob has joined the meeting.
When I was out in San Diego about three years ago, I had a terrible time at the time change, you know? Three hours. I'd staff calling me at five o'clock in the morning out there, you know?
Yeah, I was answering emails at five AM in the morning, watching the news. But again, thank you very much. I appreciate the time this evening and uh, there are no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Ben, can you grab your tag in?
Right underneath, right.
It's just right underneath.
Yep.
Not sure.
She'll, she'll get started first. She's not very ready.
I think there's only. Good evening. Um, I'm gonna uh, provide an update on a hydro contract extension. It's, it's a small one. But just to provide the context, uh, I think you've probably seen the version of this chart many times. So this is just the uh, to show the kind of the, our power supply portfolio. And you can see the height, the blue is hydro. It is a pretty significant portion right now. And, you know, it's gonna go down, you know, in the twenty thirties, forties. But right now, I think whenever we have the opportunity to, to continue the contracts, we do. And also I think Greg mentioned that we might consider consolidating some contracts, but that's down the road. So for today, the update is really about this pretty small uh, contract. It's about ten thousand megawatt hour per year output. Uh, we actually got fifteen thou- over fifteen thousand megawatt hours uh, last year. So it just depends on the weather. If they have, they produce more, we just buy more. Um, this is the third extension, starting from two thousand twenty-two. And this covers from the beginning of two thousand twenty-four to the end of two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-four, uh, twenty-five. Um, and what is the other piece? I think, uh, I think the, the reason we're doing a new renewal is just because the facility is still under the FERC license. Renewal. So it's still kind of uncertain how long they can last. So we, we, we try to do this every year. And also because we do it every year, so the price escalation is a little uh, like, kind of, it changes. It's, it's a little, little more than the, the original contract that we had. Uh, so that's pretty much the, kind of the terms of this extension. I don't know if you have any question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so you said it's only a year because we don't know how long the facility will last?
If they don't get the license renewed, then we won't be able to.
Oh, okay.
It's a little, yeah, just, just add a little bit more color on this one. So this is the, this is a contract that uh, goes back to actually twenty twelve. Um, and then it went to a different ownership change in twenty sixteen. Um, couple, two years back. So we, uh, back in twenty twenty-one, uh, we made a concerted effort to secure. Select hydro facilities because there will be no additional hydro facilities built in our region. It's an important part of the portfolio. This particular one, um, we decided not to do a long-term contract on it. Um, not so much because it was under license renewal, but at that um. Eighteen months ago, twenty-four months ago, the price that they were looking, what they had, the price that they would need to charge us. Was significantly high because of some of the um, improvements that they need, that they would need to make to the facility. Um, so we chose not to do that at that point in time, but we agreed to, to, as they kind of figure out what that is, we're basically keeping, this is basically keeping our option open. So the, the facility will, will probably continue to run for the next twenty-five, thirty years. Um, the question's gonna be key, become what's the cost structure? What's the net price for us? So we passed on the first time, but uh, went into this agreement of um, extensions, just to keep our first right of refusal for that, for lack of a better word. Um.
How does the, how does the pricing for this contract compare to?
It, it's slightly above the um, our average. Uh, so, so one of the things that we do in these meetings. Do we have a very detailed spreadsheet in terms of analysis, et cetera? But because we do um, confidential pricing. So we can probably share with, uh, individual with all of you guys, the numbers, this one's slightly above um, the average that we have. And there's no certificates tied to it either. And that certificate, it, um, it has not had certificates as long as we've been using that. We typically, well, not typically, well, no, we typically, um, our goal and our strategy is always to buy certificates with power. Starting in twenty thirty, um, any certificates that we want to retire need to be purchased with the power. We call them associated certificates. So, you know, this thing will be resolved the next two or three years at the latest. We might decide, we'll decide again next year if we want to extend it or not. We're keeping it on our portfolio for options right now. And it's the other things that we think about. There are three main watersheds that go through the. East, the western part of our territory. Um, and so this is in one of the most eastern ones, so it's also good from a. A balancing. What we try not to do is have too many dams along any one watershed area. Because if it happens to be dry, then whatever downstream is, it's the same water flow. So anyways, we, hydro is particularly fascinating. This past two years, um, this has been particularly wet. And so as, as Megan mentioned, this is normally a ten thousand megawatt hour a year project, but last year it ran actually fifteen thousand.
So Greg, who gets the certi- if we don't get the certificates, who's getting this? There's no certificates.
Uh, I've gotta go back and look at it. We have not ever bought the certificates from this one. Um, so I'm not sure. I believe they sell them to somebody else. Um, which is. Right for them to do.
But they've already sold the certificates.
I, I'm pretty sure in this particular, I have to go back and look at the certificates, but we've never bought certificates for this one. If we were to do a long-term one, we would have to. And that would be part of the agreement.
By twenty thirty, you're required to buy certificates with the energy?
Where, so we are, we are indirectly required. Um, so in today's market, uh, this is not something that we do. We only retire certificates that are purchased with associated power. But um, other MLPs or other utilities can buy power and then buy certificates. And then take those certificates and retire them. The two be separate. Um, for MLPs, that option ends in twenty thirty. So when we think about, like, this is a year extension, but when you think about longer-term contracts, we're very careful about making sure that we, what we always have. And we always will, and we need to, but make sure that we buy the certificates with the power. And it usually is economically a better deal as well. Um, certificates now, there's a lot of things that, so there's a bunch of factors that are happening relative to the power market. Um, but certificates are becoming increasingly valuable. And right now, class ones are thirty-nine dollars. And the, the cap is forty dollars. The cap is tied to the alternative, alternatives compliance payment, which is forty dollars. So they're right at the top. There's increasing shortage of certificates, so we want to manage us very carefully. But this one doesn't have any, simple, simple one-year extension. It's just kind of a, keep the option open. Nothing special about this one.
So this, this is a one-year contract and you've.
Correct. Just a one-year extension.
But, and you mentioned something about right of first refusal. Does this give us somehow an edge over anybody else for seven, ten years? Is that in the contract that we have some first uh, opportunity at some preset price beyond the one?
No, no, there's no preset price.
It's just a year and it ends at, at the end of the year.
So we're, we're, so this is, we have several projects. This is with gravity. We have several projects with gravity. Um, they prefer to work with us. We, we're continues to go forward. The react, so um. There's not a formal written into this one-year extension, um, first right of refusal, but they tend to come to us first. In fact, that's what they did on this particular one. Somebody else asked about it and.
Okay. But the contract doesn't have anything that gives us any more of a right at the end of the year than anybody else.
Correct.
My sense is also more like a re- relationship, right? The, the ki- kind of the providers I've talked to, they, they seem to say, okay, you know, because we like you guys, you're very reliable. Pay your bills, then they will often come back at the end of the term.
Why not get that, but you can't get that into the, that, that, that likability factor to translate into some contract clause that actually gives you the right?
Sure. Like, we can put it in. We, you can make a conditional on, on putting that first right of refusal in. This particular one, Dave, um, was, we'll put it in there. That's a, a good recommendation. This is probably not a contract that we'll do a long-term deal on.
Good, because it won't have credits. Because.
The real, the real. The real reason is in order for this to get properly licensed, it's going to become very expensive.
Good.
And it'll, it'll be more expensive than we want to pay in our portfolio. That's the, that ultimately, that's what's gonna happen. So this basically just fill, you know, this, we're just.
Okay, so there's not, there's not a play after a year anyway.
Well, we might, you know, there's a potential we might do it twenty twenty. We'll look and see where we are in twenty twenty-six. Cause we have some contracts that are coming off hydro contracts. And so we're gonna rethink how we do those large ones. Yeah, so you, your conclusion is right. It's not, um, this is a, sure, this isn't a strategic hydro contract.
So what?
This is on a smaller.
So then I guess the question comes down to how, how is the pricing here different than the open market pricing at the moment? The pricing that we, we'll be, we'd be paying here, how does it differ from what you pay in the open market for power?
The open market is more volatile, so it's, if you have, you have to look at long-term to compare that. But I think I heard one quote, same hydro, it was uh, uh, thirty dollars more than what we're paying for this contract.
This is, this is less than open market.
Less than open market.
Okay.
I mean, just looking at our projected hydro in the future after twenty thirty-one drops. Stays flat until about twenty forty and then almost disappears. So I guess that's the life of that station. Unless they go an upgrade or.
No, that's not so much the life of it. So we have a, we have a broad mix. So we, but every once in a while, we go back and look at the very details of these. Um, we haven't done that in a little while. But on the hydro contracts, um, most of the hydro facilities are gonna continue. I mean, most of these have been around since the early nineteen hundreds and they'll probably be around a hundred years from now. The nature of that is what we have contracted. And so one of the, you know, one of the things that we're looking at right now. I didn't, I didn't bring it to this presentation, but we're looking at the normal shape of hydro output versus our normal shape. Hydro tends to be a spring, um, primarily it's, it's highest in spring, then falls off to minimal in August. Um, so what, what we originally had planned on is having hydro be twenty-eight to twenty-three, twenty-four percent of our total port, port, total portfolio. But given that it's been very wet, um, it's up to thirty percent. We're, we're trying to basically say, so maybe we ought to, we ought to tailor back and let some of these contracts expire um, and not renew them. This is probably, again, this one is probably not a strategic one. We, we, given our size, we tend to look at projects that are twenty to thirty to forty thousand dollars. Forty thousand megawatt hours a year. This one's. It's, it's nice. It's, it's a, it's a placeholder. It's not a, it, it's a convenience for us right now.
Yeah. Given that it's only per year, why would they, why would they give us a contract at less than open market when they could turn around the same day and get more money?
I think especially for smaller facilities, they want a certain day of payment. Like some of them don't, don't wanna deal with, you know, the volatility.
I need your approval on the questions.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Anymore from us? I don't think so.
Okay.
Two steps. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we do. Okay. Move that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to execute a one-year contract extension. For energy from gravity, Aspenuk Wire Wind Hydro Facility.
Second.
Can hold her on.
Move excellent.
Okay. Who would like to read?
Uh, move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board. Vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to execute a one-year contract extension for energy from gravity, Aspenuk Wire Wind Hydro.
Hold a favor? Okay, quick. We have a four O vote. Five O vote. Thank you.
Okay, I think I'm next.
Yep.
Uh, so just wanted to provide the group with an update on the uh, Strategic Power Supply and Load Management Committee um. Proceedings. So uh, we've, uh, as y'all know, we've been meeting uh, almost weekly about the topic. Specifically focused on the carbon capture fuel cell. Um, long story short, uh, in our last meeting. We voted to recommend that we pause um, the work on the carbon capture fuel cell for now. Um, there were a few reasons for that, um, which were really specific to the timeline and some of the um. Uh, reliances that we need on the timeline and um, how that connects to the financials. So um, a couple, I'll just kind of highlight a couple of key ones from my perspective and then other committee members can jump in with other concepts as well as they'd like. Um, you know, the, the general consensus was, we, we agreed with the kind of uh. The concept and the idea of pursuing these types of things, we're given especially that it is a, a net zero um, opportunity. Uh, moving towards that, um, non-carbon opportunity. Um, but land and permit. Um, approvals, you know, timeline associated not being certain. Um, the tax credit was a huge factor in uh, the financials being favorable. And, and making sense for um, for RMLD to pursue. That um, you know, appeared to potentially be uncertain, especially if there was and is an administration change in Washington. Um, and, you know, that was forty million dollars or so of the program.
Yep.
Um, and that would work, and the, the timeline would require us to take out a pretty significant amount of debt. On the reliance of receiving that ITC credit. Um, and, you know, we felt uncomfortable. Given the other elements of uncertainty, um, recommending that we continue to throw as many resources as we have been towards uh, the initiative. Um, the last speech just being kind of the procurement timeline, we had a lot of different moving pieces that needed to happen. Uh, in terms of, you know, hiring the, the owner's engineer and then processing the um, the RP and. Um, not having certainty around land. And there were just a lot of complicating factors that uh, we felt like we needed to really land some of those. Uh, definitive elements of the program before we could really um, continue to pursue it uh, in full. So um, the, the recommendation from the subcommittee therefore was to recommend the broader cab. And Board of Commissioners just to pause. It doesn't mean it's totally dead. There certainly could be other things that come up. Perhaps the program gets extended into twenty twenty-five. Um, we land, we figure out the land, we get permitting, et cetera. Um, but for now, uh, pursuing it as kind of the highest strategic priority uh, should be on pause.
And as an additional note, RMLD is still pursuing land uh.
Absolutely. Yeah, that, so I think the, the mission has been pretty clearly communicated to me. Keep getting on land. Or, we have plenty of purposes for it, but we are chasing land aggressively. The purposes we use it for, what, it's gonna be flexible depending where it is and when we can get it and all those kind of things. But yeah, land is my priority.
No, I mean, Greg also did provide uh, some additional uh. Analysis what the impact of not getting the ITC, the forty percent credit. And uh, uh, the impact was a little less than I would have guessed.
Yeah, too. That's I ran it. He asked me to, so.
But uh, but still, I, I think with all the moving pieces on this program, I think it's still a prudent uh, course to, to pause.
Yeah, I, I think that there's a big element that there was a, I guess, I don't know if this is public forum, we can talk about a number.
Um, probably no, no, no financial numbers, but you can talk about it conceptually. Yeah.
Okay, because there, there wouldn't have been a number associated with. There's a risk, both Pam talked about the debt aspect of it. But there was also a payment aspect that you would be on the hook prior to, you know, the ITC actually getting approved. And so, so there was that risk of that number and then the debt aspect. So.
The requirement to meet that safe harbor.
So, so the safe harbor number was, so, so I think a prudent decision and um. If there was more time. Would have been a different decision.
Or if we own the land.
Right. Line things up the way that uh ideally they would be so that you have kind of those. Uh those answers to the questions that are inevitably going to be asked, um you know, and not having all of those. And, and having the number of uncertain elements was really a big.
Yeah, the, I think the only other thing was that when we were looking at it is the way we looked at it was something that we would own. Right, it was a project we would own.
That's, that was the current, yeah, that was the, the working assumption, correct.
And, and since then, I think Greg has shared with us a PPA scenario, but and. And, and I think, I, I just want to mention it because it just makes the discussion complete. Uh he shared it with us. And the question is, rather than be owning it. The third party, a third party would own it and we would just be buying their services. Obviously, it's, you know, let the, it's not as attractive, but the risk goes down significantly. And the only question is that, you know, they may not be able to do it in the timeframe that's needed for the ITC. So that, that, I think it's, someone else would have to take the risk.
Yep.
And. I don't know if that's something you want anyone to discuss or we just close it here.
Uh, uh, so I think we're.
Cause I, I just want to make sure because it's something that you did send to us and, and I want to make sure it's covered as part of this discussion.
So I think the, I think. Closing it, um so pausing it as I think we wrote in the motion, as an RMLD owned asset is the right thing to do right now. Um. There's some analysis that's being done in the background by third parties. Um if the proposal comes back looking interesting from a PPA perspective, then I'll bring it back to the subcommittee and then we can, we can talk about it. At a meeting as, as required. Um it's not taking any of our resources. I mean, I, we, I did, obviously I did some analysis, but. Um, you know, we'll take a look at that. If it looks, if it merits some additional stuff, I'll bring it to you. I'll share whatever comes back with you guys. And then if you want to take it further, great. But I think the only avenue right now, given the, the interest in managing and minimizing risk. Is the PPA option is probably the only one that would work short term. Um and again, as you guys mentioned, the risk would all be taken by whoever the developer would be, it would not be us. Um and then as you guys mentioned, um you know, there's, you know, depending upon what happens um at the end of the year and early next year. Um if uh carbon capture fuel cells, fuel cells in particular, it's not the carbon capture equipment. If the fuel cells um have a different kind of an ITC um as a grant. Um then we'd be interested in looking at that as well at that point in time. So I think as you guys said, um we haven't killed the project. We're going to basically pause. We've got a lot of analysis that we did. We've done more analysis on this particular project, which is good than on anything that I've been involved with uh during my four years here. Um so I think it's been very helpful to, to walk through all that details, but pause on the asset. And then if the, the asset ownership, um and if the PPA looks interesting, I'll report back to you guys. If it doesn't, then we'll leave it till next year.
Okay.
Good.
Are we also hoping that the. Carbon capture fuel cell at a. Municipal capacity would be mature as a technology, that there would be more, I think, as we looked at at least the carbon capture element. We saw it on boilers, but we didn't really see it pair directly with.
Yeah, so I think that's a good, that's a good point. Um so uh we've actually, uh since we did our visit down to New York. Uh they've continued to move forward on a whole bunch of different dimensions. Um they actually gave me an update today on some of the other different projects. There might be an opportunity for us to look at them using that carbon capture technology, um which is more developed than what we saw, and a lot more installations. On other generation assets potentially that. It would not be as expensive necessarily from a capital expense perspective. Um and then the other element is we met with another fuel cell company that has a very different approach. It's all integrated. It's a, it's a fundamentally different, same net result. Um similar process, you know. Um, uh but we might, again, let's see how the ITC plays out. We might dust that one off too. Um so there, there are options. Um, you know, big, and we'll talk about this in the next section, big picture, the need for us to do something still remains. And so we'll walk through what we're going to do near term. Um I'll bring you guys up to speed. Um but we're going to continue, we have to, we have to be creative in terms of figuring out a longer term solution because. Unless something fundamentally changes with the state, the challenge that's in front of us still remains. We just have to figure out a different way to do it, just, which is, you know, part of the interest.
Just for completeness, that issue, the concern over the technology and the maturity of that wasn't part of our decision making or dialogue with the recommendation. Um but certainly, you know.
Yeah.
The more we know.
Yeah.
Better. The, the other thing I just wanted to note is we, we will continue to meet as a committee, probably not weekly, but um we will, we're going to uh regroup at some point. Uh to discuss what our focus should be in terms of supporting additional opportunities that may be lost.
Yeah.
Um as well as uh maybe refocusing a bit towards load management as well.
Yeah, there's been, um you know, the team's worked pretty hard behind the scenes to, to make all this happen. A lot of work. Um Saudi, a different pace will be good. Um like we've been, we've been up to speed on all the minutes and all the analysis, et cetera. So it's been good, but yeah, different pace will be good.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you to you and your team, um and everybody who participated and committed all the time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That, that's thank you. Erica, is, is Bob online? Can we get his comments also, please?
Yes.
Bob, any comments?
Can you hear us?
I thought he dropped off.
He's, yeah, I'm meeting.
Oh, there he is.
Yeah, can we get your comments? Not a good connection.
No comment on the committee stuff? Is that what you said?
Okay, thank you.
About the committee, Bob, did you hear it? Yeah.
Yes, I did. No, no, no comments at all. Good job summarizing.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Um move that the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board advise RMLD to pause continued work on the carbon capture fuel cell project. On the recommendation of the RMLD Strategic Power Supply and Load Management Committee.
Second.
Hi.
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 My turn?
Sure.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners advise RMLD to pause the continued work on the carbon capture fuel cell project. On the rec- recommendation of the RMLD Strategic Power Supply and Mode Management Committee. Second.
Hold a favor. Uh Bob, you vote? Yeah, okay, that's a five O group. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good job.
Okay, uh Greg? Vote Management and In-Teritory Asset Update.
So she gets the slides up. So um as you guys know, we had, we have, uh that carbon capture fuel cell was one of many projects that we're working on. Um one of the ones that we're working on in parallel, not one of them, but one category. Um is the energy storage. Um and just, you know, big picture, just to remind us, right, storage systems are not generators. Um. You know, they are fundamentally time shifters and the reason why we put them in place is primarily economic and then secondarily reliability and resiliency. And that lower left hand chart is, that's our actual data from actually probably two years ago now. But the idea from an economic perspective is actually to discharge ahead of time. And then uh to charge ahead of time and then discharge during the peak hours. Um and so you can see that blue chart there um is, or the chart in lower left hand corner, that purple line is our actual load. And then underneath it, um there's the blue and the um yellow. Those are basically um the battery and the generator running during those peak hours to do load reduction. So um the technology works, um it's a proven system. Um, we're also looking at it. So from an economic perspective, it's a peak shaver. Um and that's a good thing. We're also looking at it from the perspective of reliability. And as we've talked several times before, it's kind of an introduction in terms of the context for why we look at in territory assets. Um the regional, the, the regional network is becoming more fragile. That's not to say that it's broken. It's just becoming more challenging. So we anticipate, and we came across this in the past two winters, um ISO New England came very close to doing a mandatory load reduction. For us, a mandatory load reduction um would mean actually turning customers off. And remember, our mission is reliable, low cost, non-carbon. We never, ever, to the best of our ability, want to do that. So the idea of adding additional storage to our network is both from the economic perspective in terms of peak shaving. But also from a reliability perspective. So that's kind of the big picture background. It's an important point, uh portion of it. So these are in process systems. So you guys know we have the existing five megawatt at Station Three.
So I interrupt you. Um Dave, we have, I think, a member of the public in the waiting room. Would you like me to let them in?
Sure.
It's Laura and Mick Dunne.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we're past public comment, but they're certainly welcome to come in. Are they asking to make a comment?
They didn't say anything. She just ended.
Thank you. We love having a, a member of the public here. Yeah, it's good. We have no members of the public. Welcome.
Oh, actually liaison.
Okay.
Oh, good, good, good. Alright, so um uh so the next part, the new mobile project, um it's a five hundred, it's a half a megawatt system, that'll go into Station Two. Um, that'll probably, that will be in before the end of the year. Uh work's being done on it right now. This is a project that we approved last year. It's the Caterpillar Mobile System. Um, the next one um is a new ten megawatt. Um this is known as, we call it internally, the Castage Project. Um, yeah, we approved it a year and a half ago. We contracted it last year. Uh this is the one that is having a hard time finding a location in Wilmington. Um they basically, River Park is a location in North Reading. Um, so uh that'll basically go at the back end or the southwest corner of the River Park um industrial complex. Um so that's in process. The, the next one down the fourth on our list, that's another ten megawatt system. There are actually two five megawatt systems, but ten megawatt. Um that is a citizen system that's almost contracted. That's one we approved a year ago. Um that will go at Station Three. Um our goal is to get that in place by um June of twenty twenty five. That's tentative schedule right now. And then it's the last two. Um. There is the uh hundred uh hour system, um known as FORM. Um that would be a twenty twenty six project. Um that one is a little bit different than these other ones and then the, all of these with the exception of that hundred hour system would be. Um energy savings agreement, shared savings module. So we're not taking the technology risk. We're not taking the economic risk. Um we're giving up some of the value, uh but we've basically positioned these with the exception of that form system. I'll walk you through in a second why we've done it that way. Um as, as shared savings models.
And you've also got the Lynnfield project that's, I forget.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're right. Yep, the Lynnfield should be on here. That's exactly right. You're exactly right. Okay, I'll make sure I had that. Say what?
Well, the capacity of the storage.
Um that's tended to be, the, the plan is to make that five megawatts. Uh but we, we, the reason, it could be a two and a half megawatt system, but the goal is five and that's the reason being is that the solar array is two and a half. And it's, and it's limited by size. Um and so that project, I didn't put that on this list, that project is in process. Um right now, we're working on, on Article ninety seven. We have to make sure of all the, the permit stuff relative to the land before we do any asset stuff. But the reason I wanted to mention that hundred, the hundred hour system is. That one has an ITC that does not expire at the end of the year. Um, we'll walk very carefully at ITCs and the new, is that for all the reasons that we've discussed in the subcommittee group. Um but the Commonwealth uh is also, we'd also, the, the way we have uh. Um looked at the economics is that it would be um dependent upon a grant from the state as well, a fifteen million dollar grant from the state. Uh of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth. Um, we are um five days away from the end of legislative session. Um part of that legislative session is to earmark about two hundred million dollars. Um and it should go through, but again, it's not done till it's done. Um so that's going to be an important, uh and now that the two hundred million dollars would be where the fifteen million dollars would come, there's still application process that we would have to do. If it does get, if it does get through, um if it does get past the Senate and the House, which it probably will, and then it is approved by. The governor, which would be an August event, we would need to um have a, a grant application ready um by mid September. And we would do that in conjunction with form. Again, so there's some prerequisites that are going to happen before we do a lot of, of design work on that project. But that one's going to be a little bit different and we'll update you guys more. The other key thing, it's a hundred hour system. It has like all of these battery systems. They all have um. Uh pros and cons in terms of how they work. So we have not made a formal commitment to form, but we're, we're continuing to meet on a regular basis to get everything ready. But the grant application on that one is going to be a prerequisite. The, what we had done back in the March meeting was to approve a budget number. Um but if you guys remember that motion, um no money, you know. No contracts would be done until we came back to you for approval on any contracts. So, and that obviously needs a home too for land. So going back to the land stuff. One of those several properties. I won't spend a lot of time on land tonight. I'll probably give you guys an update in two weeks uh via our, between meeting updates. Um but a lot of progress on land as well. So anyways, the point being of this slide is um. While we still need to figure out in territory generation option, um and I'll walk through it in just a second. Storage is still a critical piece and we have a lot of good progress on these. So that's, and that's all our stuff and then it's uh, it's working well. The um, the second piece, as we talked about this before, you know, kind of updated this in territory generation. So that was storage. This is generation. And as you know, those first two blocks, um you know, there's the existing roughly ten megawatts that's in our territory right now. It's primarily PPA and then some resi. Um and then that next box, uh the thirty megawatts, um the Lynnfield project can is in that little box. Um the Maple Metals project is in that box. Um there's potentially, there's, there's a couple of other five megawatt systems in that box. The goal is by the end of this decade to have all those projects in place and each one of them is going to have its own, own timeline. But from a strategy perspective, we want to have that in place. And as we talked about, why that's great, we'll end up with forty megawatts of solar. Forty megawatts of solar works out to be about sixty thousand um megawatt hours a year. Which is eight percent of our current load. As our load grows, that'll fall down to five percent. So absolutely want to do it from all the economic reasons, from, from it being in territory, it makes sense. And we're going to maximize that to the extent we can and it is land limited. That blue blocks in the middle is, it'll be, you know, we'll ex- uh explore additional alternatives. Um we'll continue to feed, you know, continue to explore. Um but that would be a twenty megawatt block. And remember, our goal, big picture, um and we use this, actually Ken and I, we use this at the presentation that we did for the Lynnfield presentation. But to have basically three twenty megawatt blocks spread, a base load spread around a territory between now and the end of twenty forty. And the goal behind that is again tied to resiliency as well as all the economic things. Um we've talked before, there's nothing for us to do right now except continue to follow the market and research, but that low temperature geothermals is another part of that twenty megawatt. And potentially as we get, you know, further out toward twenty forty, hydrogen could be the other twenty megawatts. Those top two boxes are future things, um you know, no major actions. But again, as you, as we think about our generation strategy, um and, and matching load, you know. We're, you know, we're looking at ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. So those are all pieces of it. So, so that's just a, a quick snapshot. Carbon capture fuel cell from an asset owned perspective, um you know, obviously for all the reasons we've mentioned before. Um we pulled that off the table for now. It could depend upon what happens next year. It could re- resurface. Um so anyways, I just want to make sure you guys understood that while we took that one off, um we still have a fundamental need to keep exploring and we are, and we're doing stuff. So questions on in territory assets?
I have a question on, you know, the load management more generally.
Yep, I'm going to talk about that and general manager. There's a lot on that one.
Oh, there is. Okay, I thought that was part of what this was going to be.
Yeah, I, I saw the title. Um it should have, yeah, I put it, so. I'll talk about it in a few minutes. Oh, we can ask questions now.
Yeah. What's that?
Let's get to, let's get item nine.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep.
Okay, you want to um move on to item nine? Yeah, somebody want to move to motion?
Oh, I, yeah, um. Move that IFB twenty twenty four twenty one for Duck Bank Excavation Services be awarded to Tim Zanelli Excavating LLC. For two hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred dollars pursuant to method law, chapter thirty, section thirty nine. And as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second.
Okay. Great, so just uh quick update on this one. So this particular project, um when talking about Duck Bank, this is basically excavation work. And underground conduits, combination of uh conduit and uh concrete work. This is specific to two projects. One is Gazeebo Circle. Um for those of you guys who are part of the Reddington meeting, this was the project that we had to do the presentation for the easement, which was obviously passed. Um this is part of a new water pumping station for the town. Um but it also, um this particular, this particular project here is an extension of that Duck Bank to allow us to do underground work. To the Gazeebo Circle area. And then the second one is also um work at the Johnson Woods, basically to provide a second uh. Second line basically to feed the Johnson Woods. So those are the two projects. Um, the bid went out, the bid went out to thirty.
Vivek lives there. We're just joking, yeah.
Oh, Johnson Woods?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. So, so yeah, so we like anyways. Um, thirty one uh bids went out, or went out to thirty one companies. Um this was back in June timeframe. Um, uh four bidders came back. Um, at the end of the day, you, you're in the table there. Um we've worked with uh, we do, we do. So Tim Zanelli ended up being. Um at the end of the day, you know, they're in the table there, um we've worked with uh, we do, we do, so Tim Zanelli ended up being the lowest. You know, the bidder in terms of uh responsible and eligible, um it's the numbers were were, we do a lot of work with Zanelli and with the other ones for that matter. Um everybody looks at their different bid projects um individually, so again, this is a formal bid process. Um our recommendation is to take the one that, in this particular case, happens to be the lowest dollar figure as well. So I can answer more questions on it, pretty straightforward, four bidders, good pricing, project we need to do in the budget.
No, turn on, I just have a question, what does alternate mean? So there's location and then alternate, are both of those things actually happening?
Yeah, we're doing both, both locations, yeah, that's intention to both locations. Good, and the budget was two sixty. Yeah, Bob.
Yeah, um yeah, the alternate fee, uh it's Dr. Guys, it's it's contract, but is that reimbursable construction to R M L D? You know, John Johnson Woods is not, what we know what they started, what they finished with, it's a completely different area.
Um I'll check in, Bob. Yeah, that's a good question, yeah, reimbursable.
That definitely should be reimbursable fee to R M L D because it's just, you know, the load growth that 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 location has had with the density is is amazing from what it first started to where it is now, so I can't imagine, you know, what they, what initially what projected to what it is now, so I would, I would think that that growth should be, you know. Well, think about it, Greg.
Uh that's, that's a good reminder, um the question behind it is this um addition specific to an individual site or individual customer, and typically what we do if it's tied to a particular customer, a particular well, particular customer, specific to them and not and not uh valuable to the rest of the, or a portion of the rest of the um network. Then we actually um build the company, build whoever the customer is directly, pretty standard stuff, so I think what builds, what Bob is Randy, let's, let's go back and take a look at that, which I will do.
Any further discussion? Oh, ready for a vote? All in favor? Okay, all right, we got four, Bob, you got a vote?
Yeah, I'm a favor.
Thank you, motion carries five oh, thank you very much, Greg, everybody.
Good team, that's a team effort, yeah.
Yep.
A lot of work on procurement too. And the engineering team.
Thank you for procurement, who is not here, but all of those who worked on this, we thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, Ben.
It's team effort. Alright, uh so, well, well, a couple, just again, try and use these to, there's a lot of things percolating, trying to do as much as, you know, keep you guys informed of all the things that are happening. Lot of activity, um so, sorry. Uh leadership stuff, so uh marketing manager starts in early August, two weeks, um which would be great. Um we hit the ground running, we got a very experienced individual, um looking forward to uh to her being part of our team. Uh you know, I've been searching for a uh director of engineering, so uh we have an internal candidate um that'll end up taking that role in mid-August, um that individual um is part of the R M L D team. And uh just finishing off some, some combination of a week of vacation, but also finishing off some of the projects that he's been working on, um so on the twelfth, he'll transition over, which would be great. And then uh working on, um so I've been spending some time with Megan in terms of uh how we are gonna how we're looking at the organization of the I R D group and then what candidates will put in there as well, so that's a work in process. Um the external marketing, um yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it says Assistant Director of Engineering starts, and I thought you said Director Engineering.
Uh when I wrote this, I, my apologies, yeah, so the initial position is an Assistant Director role. So I, so I'm filling an Assistant Director of Engineering role. Um my intention is not to fill the Director of Engineering role until next year. And um the intention is I am confident that this candidate that's taking the Assistant Director Engineering role will uh will be able to perform at a level to take the Director role, but the arrangement I have right now is to step at a time.
Okay.
Well, yeah. Which would be great, so I'm I'm pleased with how this is where I'm, I'm confident that will work out very well. So I'm, I'm pleased with that. External marketing, a couple just real, you know, sorry, go ahead.
But would you have had two, two positions, would you have had a director and an assistant director, now you're just having one person there?
Uh my intention is not to have in the engineering, my intention is to have only one role, either an assistant or or assistant director or director role.
Okay, does that change, or that's just what?
Sorry?
That was that changed to the org structure, or is that how that works?
Uh that's how, uh I have to go back, so I I basically budgeted one senior level person.
Okay.
Uh I have to go back and look at how I did the org chart, but I'm pretty sure I, but from a budget perspective, I intended to have one. External market, so real quick, external marketing, the outage map, um uh I think you guys have seen some email traffic, but we're really working pretty diligently to make sure that that works. And we're trying to be very careful that we maintain our, you know, you guys know we are highly sensitive to cybersecurity. So that's one key piece where we we're making sure that we've got it locked down, um but once we get that up and running, um that'll be very valuable from our customers, and we'll do what we're not yeah, but we'll do a major announcement, but it'll be very helpful for customers, we'll tie it into outbound communication through text, there's a whole bunch of stuff tied to it. Um it's taken some time but worked through it, um but it'll be really good. Um annual report will be ready for approval in August, um pretty straightforward, and obviously we'll resume our newsletters in August as well with the additional of a marketing manager.
When do you think that outage map will go live?
Uh well, it's um formally live, probably September. Well, yeah, it's that close.
Would we get a demo of it or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, the demo will be, go to R M L D dot com, but not yet.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, it, it literally is, it will literally be on the website. We had it running, we went through a couple snags, so we took it off and then we're gonna restart it again, that's why we haven't been too public, but it's, it's, you you can see it. And it actually was pretty helpful at one of the outages we had, uh storms two, two weeks ago. Um it'll be, it's, it's, it's good, it, we're, we're excited. Physical plant, um two eighteen, the operation center. That building, as you guys know, um is, you know, it, it has suffered from lack of maintenance for quite some time. So we're, we're keeping it alive, um we had to do some roof work, uh obviously you wanna keep rain out of the, you know, water out of the building. The H V S, H V A C system needed some repairs, so we did that. Um as you guys walk down in a few minutes, you'll see that some of the internal construction is getting close to the end in terms of this building, trying to minimize all that investment. Um substation six, as uh Ben mentioned earlier, um you know, there'll be some onsite construction starting this fall, we're expecting the actual transformers to arrive realistically January of next year, that'll be important. The security system replacements in process, that'll probably start in September. That extends to substations as well, there's a lot of video stuff tied to it, so um that's been a long process uh in the works, um but we wanna get that done, cause well, I've said it now. Um you probably noticed when you came in, there's some uh uh plywood covering uh in the corner there, um there's a sewer line repair that that we're in the process of, um unfortunately, it was more involved than than we originally planned. Um it had improper pitch, it had a kink in it as they started uncovering it, so we ended up having to do an emergency pair, we got uh approval to do that. There's a process that we have to go through um with the I G office, so we went through that process. Um it's obviously a pretty basic element in this org, in this building. We have two sewer lines, um but this one is the main one. Um transformer replacement program is kinda hidden under there, but uh we're very, so we have, uh we've got quite a few transformers that are delivered this year, um so far this year. Um so our transformer replacement program, which is real critical for maintaining that reliability. It's a program that's been in place for a couple of years now, we, we had to slow it down the past two years and we're picking it back up again, um that's in process, so that's good. Um A M I, A M I vendor, you'll get a little more details on this, but we are almost finished with the process, we selected our top two, we prioritize the top one. That is a very important prerequisite to time of use work, uh load management work, et cetera, um so uh big milestone this past week, uh now we have to do, and we'll come to you with final approval type stuff, but in the budget. Um and a pretty significant, it's a significant project and a significantly important. Um as you guys remember, we talked earlier this year about uh outsourcing versus uh bringing in the tree contractor. Uh we went out for a competitive bid, um we approved that, it was less expensive in terms of the uh the two options that were presented, uh the new contractor uh is off to a very strong start. Um they're, they're staffing a little bit differently than the previous one did, um very responsive. Um and they're actually not only earning our respect, but they're, I mean, the town's respect, so um that's, that's off to a great start, so.
And you say the town, talking about the town tree ward, Redding Tree Ward.
That one in particular, but all the three wardens, but yes, the, the, yes, and particularly that three warden, yes, which is important, cause that's our uh that has just historically been our, our uh tension point. Uh as you guys know, um you know, uh trees are 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 primary uh cause of outages. Um and uh unfortunately, our reading lines are are still overgrown, so it's gonna take a little, a couple of years for us to get caught up to a point. Um so, but again, that's all about reliability.
Yeah, I I understand from our point per- perspective, it's reliability, and uh I get all of that, Reading's known as the tree city and there's a lot of initiatives to have more trees and
Totally good.
Yeah, Reading Climate Committee is looking to try to expand for t- tree protection um in more formal ways, so there's a lot of discussion about trees, but
Yeah.
But no, I understand you.
Yeah, and we, and we actually, part of our, our budget is to actually plant trees as well, so, so you know, again, we like trees, just not on the lines.
Right. Red buds are very good for the new vines, they don't grow very tall.
Perfect, I like it. Alright. Load management, um so, um you know, we talked, the original plan was to have an update for you guys in, in June. Um but uh Megan and I are working through bringing this to speed, so we'll have more details shortly. But a couple of key meetings, so uh we met with M but Connected Homes, um they uh they walked us through a, a program, it's a residential program. Um there's some interesting elements of it, uh we talked about some things that we would probably tailor specifically to us, uh we would be there. We would be the largest platform, we, by far the largest system on that platform. We'll finalize what we'll end up doing after we hear a little more program details from E and E, there's, they have a program that includes C and I. If you guys remember, our top fifty customers represent half of our load and are all industrials, so that's gonna be an important part of how we make the whole thing work. We wanna do something, um and we're gonna try and do these pieces, even though we don't have all of our time of use stuff in place, that, moving back to the A M I. Um realistically, the time schedule on that project would be um uh installation probably at the end of twenty twenty six. Now, just so you get, just kind of big picture, so we're gonna try and do as much as we can between now and then, these will be some key pieces. The other element in there is we also had a chance to meet uh with the Reading Cooperative Bank, I think you guys remembered that Vin Ruducci was here, um uh the May meeting, and he walked through a state program, which was a uh a loan program tied to uh larger installations, weatherization, and air source heat pumps in particular. Um so we had a good meeting with uh them earlier this week, the Reading Cooperative Bank, um we've got a follow-up meeting scheduled, but the goal is to try and get a program in place by January, we'll walk through more details on that one, but um our intention would be to take some of our um incentive dollars and um have them pay part of the interest uh on the, on the notes, so that's, we'll walk through more details on the structure, but that's the intention behind it. Our intention is not to be a bank, our intention is not to hold a note, our intention is, is to basically um make it you know, have somebody that's good in terms of managing that and work on electricity side. Um electrification conservation, so the E E C um projects, so last time we did an update was in February. Um yeah, we are, we are looking at increasing the air source heat pump incentives. Um right now, it's a thousand dollars a ton with a six thousand dollar maximum, we're looking at changing both of those. The E V charging program, the charger rebate program, um it served its purpose at the time, but it's um most of the new E Vs now come with a charger or provisions for the manufacturer to install a charger, so we're gonna redo that one. Um the yard tool program, um the, we, there was a time uh when that was actually very useful. Um but remember, with the idea behind incentives that to encourage people to do something they wouldn't normally do. Um remember the days of of lighting, which is where the big program was? You could buy incandescent at one point in time and complex fluorescence and maybe some uh LEDs. Um but now we stopped the program when basically I can really buy LEDs, so the same thing true of battery yard tools. Um snow blowers are a little bit different, but most of the other yard tools are all uh battery powered, so we're probably gonna streamline that. Which will provide some additional um uh simulation in terms of how we, how we make that happen inside our organization, so that's, that's coming down the road.
Greg, one quick question, you said increasing is uh the air source heat pump incentives, could you just talk a little bit about when you say increase?
Well, the idea behind it, so um you know, we uh the program works pretty smoothly right now, uh we're doing just
Thousand bucks, you said, Greg?
It's a thou, so the average, so it's a thousand dollars a ton. The average system, the average rebate is about thirty three hundred dollars per rebate, we do about three hundred, just under three hundred a year. But we've been kind of stable at roughly three hundred a year for the past um three years. Um there's about, so uh big numbers, there's about twelve hundred uh furnaces that get replaced each year. So at three hundred, we're roughly a quarter of them. We think that that's, we, we, we are confident that air source heat pumps are advantageous to the customers that install them. When they're in a position where they need to replace a furnace, it obviously works for air conditioning too, so that's another catalyst, but furnace is the key driver. Um and it's also advantageous for all the other ratepayers, so all of our ratepayers when as those airport air source heat pumps get installed. Our thought process to take that thousand dollars a ton and maybe increase that to twelve hundred or twelve hundred and fifty dollars a ton. And then also to take the six thousand dollar limit and move that, that limit up to maybe ten thousand dollars. So those are the two primary things that we're looking at analysis on. Our goal is to try and see if we can't get to four or five hundred um air source heat pumps installations on an annual basis in two or three years, that's what we're trying to do. Um so that's, that's the idea behind.
There's no money from the state helping on that, this is
No, this is all, this is all, so this is, this is all part of our E E C program, that's the half a cent that we collected um uh uh per kilowatt hour. Um and nothing tied to the green community, is there none of that stuff, this is just, it's a, it's our standard program. Um the other thing that's not on here. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you, can we tell if, if someone's replacing a pump, like, like the like, is it, in, in that application? Right, it should be, it should be a replacement of, of oil or gas versus someone just upgrading, you know, but I, I, you determining that, is that, is that?
Yeah, that's part, that's a good question, Bob, so part of the criteria, so we, that's the other thing we'll look at, we do allow um over a ten year period, two air source heat pump rebates to minimize that, and the reason we have two and not just one is historically, people have looked at, cause everybody's kind of getting, well several years ago, air source heat pumps were a little more novel, they're a little more commonplace now, people are more comfortable with them. But the idea is that people used to do air source heat pumps in uh uh an addition um in a basement conversion in an attic, so they would just do one portion of it. So um that's why we allowed for two, so we're gonna go back and look at that element, um we do ask as part of our day, as part of the application. Are they replacing oil or natural gas, is it, is it whole house or not whole house? At thirty three hundred dollars, and you know, these are, these are three ton systems, they're not whole house systems typically. We, we actually wanna encourage whole house where we can, which is what the state wants us to do as well, so to answer your question, there is a limitation on it. It's built into it, we'll probably look at that as well in terms of making some changes, does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
So it, it didn't sound like we were looking at um whole house, that's like a separate, unique incentive, though.
Well, no, we haven't.
But
It's not that we're not looking at, no, so um the state is really trying to promote whole house.
Yeah.
Um and so, and we think that's, again, we think it's a good thing for all of our customers, um uh in terms of, in terms of
Part of this update where you're saying you're finalizing an update to the program as part of this update?
It'll be, it'll include whole houses where.
Okay, okay.
Would you align it more with the mass save program, they, they've got a different whole house.
Yeah, they have a different, yeah, so we're looking, yeah, so we're, we're trying to take lessons from not only mass save, but you guys remember, um uh there was some suggestion to look at uh um efficiency main, so mission, efficiency main has a pretty aggressive program as well, so trying to learn from both of them in terms of what works, um so yeah, trying to learn. Um that's, but the fundamental piece is that the air source heat pump right now is the key driver, I shouldn't say, it's the it's a key piece of our E E C program. And it is, it already applies right now to commercials as well, most of the industrials really don't follow it, but remember a third of our load is commercial, forty percent is residential, and then the other third, the last thirty percent roughly, so it's forty percent thirty thirty. The industrials is the last piece, so we're really trying, the other thing we're trying to do is get more of the commercials engaged in the program as well. Again, trying to just expand it out.
I mean, converting a forced hot air gas or oil furnace with a heat pump is pretty straightforward.
It is.
It's, the hard part is when you're dealing with forced hot water.
Correct.
And, and that, because you're moving the air that would come from a heat pump um is difficult, if you have Um, it's difficult, if you have forced hot water preheating, but you have a central air conditioning unit, actually, that can be. Uh, fairly easily done, although the, the duck size could be an issue for sound and other.
Yeah.
Risk constraints, but.
Yeah.
At least that's. That's an option, um. That, that's hard enough to crack, uh, and.
And yeah, so.
And, and how much you, you require a complete home conversion when that's, that's the base heating system, um. It is, is a difficult thing.
Uh, uh, clearly, uh, and so, we estimate there's about fifteen hundred air source heat pumps that we've actually. Um, run through our rebate program, and there's roughly, there's a roughly about twenty-four thousand. Single-family homes and then another thirty-five, maybe thirty-eight hundred apartment, um, so from the residential side. So we kind of think about that in terms of the structure, the other element is a year and a half ago, uh, mass save for those customers that have natural gas. They can do the mass save program as well, which is.
And that's what I took advantage of, I.
Say again?
Yes, that's what I took advantage of.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was more, it was a richer program.
What's that?
It's a richer, it's a, it's a, it's a richer program if you're doing whole house.
Um, which, yeah, which I did do, I left my boiler as backup.
Yeah, well, there's a, there's a, again, that's, there's a whole bunch of, mass save is putting different conditions on it. But remember, you know, the mass save program is a richer program, but they're charging three point three, three and a half cents. Um, for, there are other customers, right, the electric customers, to fund that program, ours is a half a cent.
Yeah.
So, ours is intentionally not quite as rich as, I mean, it's, it's not. Intent, we don't, our intention is not to increase the EEC rate, it's to figure out how we use the dollars we have more efficiently.
And in my case, I went through, I was not eligible for the RMLD program, I was mass save only because I was a gas customer.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, you could do either, I mean, we have some customers that have gas that want to do the RMLD program for whatever reason. Which is fine.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever reason, I thought I could only do the mass.
You're gonna do one or the other, we, we, we don't, we don't, yeah, so, and you, you chose well.
I sent a second application.
Yeah, I think the other thing that, that is part of the air source heat pump program is the weatherization program, and you guys know we have a weatherization program that's tied. It's a, it's a subset of the air source heat pump, and so we're also looking at that to, to, it's worked well. Um, we have some limits on that as well, so that would be part of this, this air source heat pump revisit, so there's a lot of moving pieces to it, and then back to your point. Is that, and that, you know, we worked through some external partners, um, that helped, that, that are expert in the space, and so. Again, we want to be very careful that RMLD is not recommending systems, but we're pro- we're providing services and we're, you know, we're. We're providing services, third-party services, um, that can, that can help customers make good decisions, so it's a good overall, it's a good program, but we need to make it better. So that's, that's a, and that goes, you know, the big picture of load management, um, the, the, the residential again, forty, is forty percent of the load. Um, and we're gonna extend that into the commercials, the industrials is a hard enough to crack as well from a different set of perspectives, because. Um, you know, they're, they're looking, for most of our customers with, with one exception. Energy is a very small part of their cost structure, and so they're much more focused on making sure production runs as opposed to, hey. You know, so it's not zero, but there's a, there's an element there, we have a fact.
So, I, I think we talked a lot about more electrification right now.
Yeah.
And I think the spirit of what David was also asking was around load management. And could you give us a sense, I, I think that's the spirit, because I think what Dave's been, like, historically been pushing is. How do we reduce the load through behavior, right, that's something that we want to think about.
Not thinking about it, it's, those are the first two bullets.
Right, no, so, so. Help us think about what is the magnitude one could get? In terms of load reduction, I mean, like, what, 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 so just, just, like, what are we working, what are?
We're talking, so in terms of load management.
Like, when you talk about air source heat pumps, you know, you, you can talk specific numbers, like, three hundred, you know, units or something like that. In terms of load management, what is the potential for load reduction?
Single digits.
Percentage.
In tr- in terms of customer behavior, now remember, and we talked about before. Um, you know, our, our battery systems and our, our, um, recip, to have recip engine. Those are pretty straightforward in terms of load reductions, and they work, those are, those are the big pieces. What we have not been very successful on is the shred the peak, and so. What the Connected Homes program and the E and E program were looking at would be residential in particular. Um, and then we actually, we want to do commercial, and the question is how do we do industrial? But that's, those will be additional programs, um, that we would release, that we would introduce, that we've never had before. That go to load management on the, on the customer side, not just things that we would do.
I have a more, very small picture, but it could be important. Are we not, uh, I haven't seen any of the emails go out on, we've had a string of very hot days in the last few weeks.
Uh, you did two weeks ago.
There was an email, I, I don't think I've seen.
Yeah, so, so we did activate, um, so, the June one, we didn't make, but the July ones, we did hit. Uh, we did, we did do the communication out, so, so we, uh, we, we did that, and then with the new marketing person coming in. Our intention is to make those emails and all that communication even better, but we did, so.
The mass email went out?
I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure the mass email went out, and the text get it.
Okay, well, I'm on the list.
I, I will double check, but I, I know we did the, I know we did the social media stuff, I know we did the tweet stuff, um, I will double check on the, on the. Well, anyways, um, just so you guys know.
Yeah, I, I used to get them.
I don't, you have, you have like six board members saying that they're on the list and they didn't get it.
Okay, great.
So, I'm just saying, I mean, it's, it's, it's just such a basic thing, and it's a, uh, you know, it's a thing that we've had in place for, for years. Um, that is, with some, you know, effort, an email list has been developed of people who seek. To get the warnings.
Yeah.
Or the, the prompts, these are the same people who are the most likely to then act on the prompts. People like myself, and I think some of the others on the Diaz, and all the others, when I get those, I act, I turn my AC up. I do other things, um, and I think a lot of people are the same, so to say, oh, it's only a percent, I mean, I don't know that we have, we can't necessarily measure it. But we've had this program and it seems to have not, and nothing's happened so far, this summer on the mass email part, and it's just. It doesn't take that long to, like, send out the email.
Yeah, so.
So, I was wondering why that's not happened.
Well, I, I think I explained to that in June, that, that I didn't have the proper staff in place to do it, I thought that I had taken care of it in July. Oh, apparently, I, I, did everything except the email blast, no, I'm just, you want the answer, I'm giving you the answer. Right, so, if you remember in the previous slide, I replaced the marketing person, that's their primary responsibility, so going forward, we'll make sure that it happens. Totally good feedback.
But it's not like a full-time job to, like, load up the email four times a year.
It's not a full-time job, totally, totally agree.
I think the issue too is through the constant contact, we, our IT, yeah, my IT staff is doing something behind the scenes with the constant contact. And it has to do with security, so that, there's an issue that we can't use it right now, I don't know the details, but.
Yeah, well, we're engaged, so, uh, feedback, well-accepted, um. But I think, you know, the bigger picture, um, you know, you know, we want to do as much as we can on load management, and the reason why we want to do it. Is we've talked about this, you know, it's about working on peak shaving for capacity and transmission. And in twenty twenty-five, uh, already, we know that the transmission cost is gonna, the transmission rate we need to pay is gonna be. Twenty percent higher than it was in twenty twenty-four, so all the battery systems and this work on load management, we need to start now, don't get me wrong. But we're, you know, there's nothing but upward pressure, so our goal is to do everything we can to reduce it, so, um, it's a focus.
Yeah, I'd like Greg come up with the right answer, but the possible answer is if they aren't using constant contact or whatever their mail, email. Mess mailing list is based on, your email could see it as spam. Anything that comes in a master list serve will be pulled out as spam, so you have to have a proper way of distributing that, or you, it'll get blocked in your spam.
Right, mass emails can get, can get blocked, that's true. But I, I think, you know, the point's well taken, everybody has a little different view in terms of how they get information, so, you know, we want to be multiple channels to the extent we can. Um, and you guys know, the, two years ago, we got back into social, which we never, we never were in before. Uh, and we do the website stuff, which nobody really looks at, uh, so anyways, there's more stuff to do, agreed. We actually, you know, we have been collecting, um, uh, when we sign up new customers, um. So we have to get permission to be able to text, but you, you want to be communicated via text as well, so while emails. We don't do the special rules tied to text, so we, we want to put that into the program as well, in addition to, um, tweets, et cetera.
I know we talked about it before, but the town reverse nine-one-one or whatever they call the code.
Yeah, that's, I've seen that done a couple times, yeah.
Yeah, um, I know that we don't have a hundred percent of all the towns, so maybe it's, it's a little tricky, but, um.
Another idea, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want it constant, but once or twice a year.
But they do, on the, there was a, they sent on the, uh, reverse nine-one-one, they sent out the, the, uh. Where the cooling centers were, we could have, we could have piggybacked on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great point.
Yeah.
So, but, but just that, that point, I mean, when were we likely to have hit the peak for this year, the capacity peak? Is it in July?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
So we, our number was roughly a hundred and forty-three megawatts, which is a good number. Dark, typically we're in a hundred fifty-nine, one, one fifty-nine megawatts, and our peak's one sixty-five. So we're.
Okay.
Good, but that's capacity.
Right.
And so, so yeah, so that's highly likely that, that that was the peak for the year. It was pretty high, for the region. Yeah, and then, of course, you know, every month on transmission. So, so again, load management, again, again, you, you guys know, right, you're beating the drum on transmission capacity, this is the key piece of it. So, we're, you know, again, we've taken action since, since the last time we met, in terms of, of getting programs in place.
And if you could just send us a note on what, because first you said the emails did go out, and then you weren't sure, and then. To talk about maybe what the spam, if you could just give us the answer, send us a note.
There you go, there's the answer. Bottom line, it didn't.
Oh, okay.
Did, there you go.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you. Okay, uh. That's, 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 that's what we got, any questions?
Um, anything else you want to, the only other kind of topics on on here is just, um, kind of looking back. We had goals, remember, you had a presentation on goals in January.
Yeah.
That we are, and at some point, we would, we were talking about a review or a six-month review of those goals and. A check-in and just wanted to see if we wanted to get something on the books for the next meeting or.
Sure.
Check in on the goals, it said something about the six-month three sixty review, I don't know if that meant, you know, you reviewing department heads or us reviewing you, but. Uh, it seems like might be a good time to do a check-in.
Great.
Maybe the next, maybe the next meeting, what do you all think?
Yep, right, time to do it.
Um, not on the schedule, but, um, the Killam School.
Yep.
Has had some feedback from their engineers, what their heating system, uh, options are. And they are narrowed it down to air source heat pumps, ground source heat pumps, or a combination of both. And it's pretty much ruled out, uh, gas engines or any of the more conventional heating cooling systems. Um, they will do a, bring a drill rig in and do a test bore hole, figure out what the heat connectivity to the ground is. So you can have a better estimate of the ground source.
Right.
Right, heat system, that will then allow them to design, uh, how many wells they need, how deep they need to be. And, and whatever, and that will lead to how big a footprint that's requires. And that will then determine whether it's a hybrid or, or something else in terms of the, that system. Forget, now that, that's the source of heat, I forget how the heat being delivered to the building, there are a couple of avenues there, I don't remember how that was doing. Um, and I guess there's still some options about the solar. Um, panels, whether it's a PPA or, or ownership thing, and that's still under discussion, I guess, is what that's.
So, uh, Tom Manager and I spoke, um, back in May on that very topic, and then one of our IRD. Individuals is part of the, it's attending the meetings and representing RMLD, the Killam School stuff. Yeah. So we keep, so we extend and evolve in that.
So it will happen, it's just what.
So, so, so I think the bottom line for us is, they will be electric, we will be providing electric to the school. Um, it, and then, some of that will be supplied from solar panels locally. Whether we own it and therefore we manage the power from it, or whether they own it and they give any excess power back to us, I mean, there's. Benefits to each side depending on how that's configured. Um, if we were to own it, then we could put in excess capacity, because we could then use that excess capacity to the grid. It'd be essentially pre-power to us, if they own it, they would probably design it only for the capacity they need from the school, since. Why build more than you need, and, and therefore they would, it would only be. Well, probably, uh, would deliver power in the summer, probably not deliver power in the winter to the grid, uh, to us.
Hmm.
Because they would, they would use most of the winter power and, um. So that's, that would be different if there's a hybrid of that, than in which, then it would be some other configuration.
Is there some determination from the town or, or the school board about solar on? Parker or Kill, is there any, has there been a vote or a determination or opinion that's come down from the town on it?
No, we did a presentation back in May.
Yeah.
Um, there were some internal discussions relative, that, uh, the departments had had, um. They are asking, so I'm, when Matt gets back, or when the town manager gets back, I'll meet with him and the school board. Um, not school board, but, uh, school, uh, president, Tom, and figure out what they want to do. We're, we're flexible either way, at the end of the day, um, Parker is a relatively small system, um, we're happy to put it in if they want it. Um, if they don't want it, that's okay too, uh, we have been working through some issues in terms of how we would have to bid it.
Yeah.
That's a different topic, but that, don't have to worry about that, that's our issue, not their issue, so, uh, but it's all laid out, it's all designed, prices are there.
Where did those, where did those come from? I'm sorry, I, I'm not, haven't been that involved, just curious.
I'll, I'll do the presentation, um, happy send presentation, we had a third party look at a variety of different schools. Um, and do a proposal in terms of, uh, power options.
Okay.
It's a state, anyways, it, um, yeah, third party did a series of proposals, Killam is one of them, uh, North Grange is another one. Um, there are six schools, but those are, those are actually in a list of stuff that we talked about back in the, uh, in the May meeting. But I'll, I'll share, I'll, I'll send the whole group the, the Kill, just so, not the Killam School, but the Parker School update, just so you guys all have it, in case somebody asks you. Okay, yeah, but there's a, um, you know, there's, you know, one thing, one of the things that we, that we did as part of the, um. Uh, subcommittee is just funds flow, so it'd be important for people to understand funds flow, um. Uh, everybody involved, so I'll probably add that to the presentation, I'll send you what we, we shared back in May, and then I'll probably add that as well, because I'll need that to walk them through. What it really means if RMLD owns it versus what they own, so the two options, it doesn't, it's, um. The real, and in fact, I met one of the select board members today, happened to be in paying their bill, but. We talked about that project as well, um, at the end of the day, these smaller projects. Um, are good from an educational perspective, they're good from a PR perspective, they don't, they don't move a needle significantly. Um, in terms of economics, but they're good things for us to do, and we're more than willing to do them. If, if the individual building owner wants us to do them, in the case of, of the schools, or, well, Parker pick as a small system. Um, you guys remember, we made a, we made a serious run at, uh, at the Burbank Ice Arena for a whole bunch of different itching options. That would have been kind of a neat test bed, but, um, again, we wanted, we're, we're there to, to serve and offer, and if it, if somebody wants us to do it, great, and if not, it's okay. We'll do our best, we'll offer, I should say. So, I'll get that too. Could we, the end of the regular, so, yeah, great, are we good with the schedule?
Yeah.
So are we, are we going to go back to separate meetings in September? Or are we?
I think that's where you stop, you guys wanted to stick with the joint meeting?
Yeah, stick with the joint.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
So, so, so the next, August twenty-second, are you guys going to be here?
Be available.
Uh, I'm not, I know I'm not gonna be here, so that'd be. So we got, yeah.
Okay.
Have a good December yet?
Just trying to September, yeah.
First, that's the word for every.
The, I know the nineteenth does not work for me, um, in September.
The twenty-sixth?
I won't be here, but I, I hope Aaron will be here, if she was here, she could cover. We have a wedding.
Well, all right, that's right, the alternative could be the eighteenth or twenty-fifth, hey, Bob, oh, he's, so, I know. There was, oh, no, uh, I think Tim and Dennis has problems on Wednesday nights, Thursdays are the best nights, right?
Yeah, Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday is bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, Thursday's bad for me in the fall, like, I can't do Thursdays in the fall.
Starting September?
Starting September, yeah, going almost all the way to March, I, I can't do Thursday.
Joint might not work.
Do you want to try Tuesday night?
Only thing with Tuesday, I just have to make sure they're not on the same days.
Right.
But we could do that.
Do you want to try some joint meetings on Tuesdays, is that, I mean, look, your guys' schedule will be here, support it.
I have no constraint on Tuesdays.
Bob, Tuesday? Yeah, okay, great.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Yeah. Do, do, do the seventeenth.
That's a select board meeting, so you could do any other Tuesday besides the seventeenth.
Twenty fourth.
I may not be able to do that.
Twenty fourth looks better. Do you want to join?
Yeah, do join the twenty fourth, I have a problem with that.
Or, or Mondays easier for people, Mondays aren't conflict, pardon me? I, I, Sunday would work, you know, if we could kind of figure out something that works pretty consistently for everybody, I don't think, I don't know if we've ever even looked at Monday nights, but.
I'd prefer not, but.
Okay.
Not too.
Okay.
The Tuesday can work. Wednesday can work, I mean, Thursday's important, but. Except for.
Okay, so the seventeenth, well, so, if the seventeenth is a conflict with the select board, does that prevent us from doing it? Unless somebody wants to go to the select board and ready.
It's more like a must on the select board, the eight ones, like with ten dollars.
Okay, uh.
Could we not, the twenty fourth?
Twenty fourth, yeah, it's not great for Vivek. Well, if you want to do it.
Miss the twenty second of August, that I have to miss, because I'm on.
Oh, then, yeah, we shouldn't do two back to back.
Yeah, I don't want to miss two back to back.
Right, so.
One who couldn't do the nineteenth, so if you guys want to stick with the nineteenth.
Or, or worst case scenario, in September, we could do two meetings, I mean, I don't mind doing two meetings.
Yeah, maybe we have to do two meetings in September.
Uh, would we do budget presentations in September anyway?
October. Budgets are October, October.
That'd be okay.
No, we do that all.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to miss two meetings.
Okay.
There are meetings in September.
If you do two meetings in September, could you do the cab on the nineteenth and the, uh, the board on the twenty fifth?
Nineteenth works for you?
Yeah, the cab nineteen works for me. No, no, sorry, that worked.
No.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
He's working two jobs to pay for that duck bank.
Okay, so you want to do, how about if we do the C A B on the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Because there's no conflict there.
Yeah.
And then we do, and then we do, um, the B O C, um.
The twenty fourth.
Twenty, well, well, twenty fourth, okay, that's fine. Seventeenth C A B, September twenty fourth, is that good for everybody?
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it.
Since that was challenging, why don't you try and do October, October's going to be two steps, just remember, we do the board, we do the budget, and we have a, that's a two step. Well, we can do it off the edge if you want, but technically, the C A B has a right to look at it ahead of time.
We have, we've been emailing the budget to them prior, and then we've been doing the presentation joint just because.
Yeah, you can do, you can do.
That's correct. No, we did that last year. Yeah. I think it's, I think it's going to be Wilmington. Yeah, because we did Linfield the year, previous year, um, do you guys want to do the budget together, it's fine with me.
It doesn't matter to me.
Sure.
Okay, so, October, oh, here we go, same deal, um. Fifteenth or the twenty second, what's, what's the, um, select board in October?
Fifteenth is definitely out.
Okay, twenty second, how's the twenty second look for you guys?
That's a witching hour.
Second is fine, assuming I'm still alive.
It's a Tuesday.
And that's a budget meeting?
Budget meeting.
Yeah.
Most likely it's going to be in Wilmington, but we'll confirm that.
Okay.
You said the twenty second?
Twenty second of October, does that work?
Yeah, it's not.
Going once, going twice, twenty second?
Go for it.
Okay, so we'll book, that'll be a joint meeting, you guys want to try and do on November while we're all together?
Can't be November nineteenth.
Uh, how about, uh. Two, and which, when's the Thanksgiving?
Twenty eighth is Thanksgiving.
Do you want to try and do the twenty sixth, or do you want to do the twelfth?
Twenty ninth, tw- sorry, twenty eighth.
So, so we should probably not do that.
Twenty eighth is Thanksgiving.
Uh, what about the twenty first?
That, I'll be away the week of the twenty first, I mean, that.
I can't do Thursdays, so.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that's right.
So how about, is the nineteenth, um, select board?
Yeah.
Okay, so that makes twelfth is really the one option.
Do we have, I mean, we don't meet, is it, I, I don't, is, is there a problem with us meeting on the same day as the select board?
I, Jimmy always told me it was an issue, but I don't know if it's like actually an issue, it might be fine.
All right, let's, let's, let's live on the bridge and make it the nineteenth.
Yeah, I won't be here the night.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So the twelfth?
Well, I can do the twenty sixth, I can do.
Does the twenty sixth work for everybody here? I mean, we got, you guys know your plans, that's the Tuesday of Thanksgiving. Is it okay? Bob?
Uh, yeah, I put it in, we'll, we'll figure it out, you gotta agree, gotta figure it out, as long as we get, as long as we get free.
Okay, let's, let's just put a placeholder, we can change it, twenty sixth of November, okay, great.
That's good.
We can discuss it further on.
Yep, we're going to change it, but at least we got a placeholder. You good?
Um, you gotta do the great cab adjournment.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, we're ready to move.
Um, move it to citizens advisory board adjournment session.
Uh, second. Can alter, I.
Thanks, thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Great, move it, uh, move to the R M L D Board of Commissioners to Executive Session pursuant to Massachusetts General. Uh, Chapter one fifty four, Section forty seven D, exempt from public records and open meeting requirements. In certain instances, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than. The duel, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer. Employee, staff member, or individual in the approval of meeting minutes, and return to regular sessions with sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Hi.
It looks like a five oh, thank you very much. We bring these in or?